All right. Yeah, I thought it was really good. John? How are you?
I'm doing just fine, yourself?
Just peachy. I'm filling out an application for more helping with the application. Um, anyway, he's just been working. He's been working right. Oh. Something, um, anyway, he's just been working. Been working right. Oh. Anyway, I'm just going to do more on computer all day long. And trying to say. And they made my own statement and all. And trying to say. Um, and.
I don't want to let you do it because I've got to have some speaking program.
Mr. Stan?
Okay.
Good morning, John.
My expectation for you on the agenda items, the letter that you want to meet today, it actually doesn't have to be a letter from the county. They just want you, three commissioners, to log in and sign their letter that they wrote. So when you're in your folder, there's no letter. It's just an agenda item. Does that make any sense?
That makes.
Beautiful sense.
Perfect.
And since I had a full class, I didn't tell you before session last time, I was not going to make that mistake today.
Oh, you know, I would anyways.
Oh, come on.
I'm trying to do my part to.
Well, you do your part very well, Crystal.
Sometimes.
We will not hold you accountable for my.
Oh, well, it's okay. There's the end question. And where it comes down. John wants. John wants everything.
Well, I know everything. Hi, how are you?
You're one of my favorite people. Uh, John? Oh, yeah. No, she really is. Where's Stan?
Oh, I've got to do it. Yeah, no, the fact you got one that's, uh, oh, uh, whole courts. It goes over for our whole court, whole courts.
Whole court, we're climbing.
I'm going to my auto writing. Whole court, I'm going to sit in the other end of that because people.
Oh, no. They're not here. And they go shopping for you at the outlets?
No, I was going to. He was just that whole thing we would call up here and. You two, that does not stay.
Is she?
She is.
Is she a wild child?
She's a wild child. He's got a bad last night. Well, they know her twenty-five nights of the study.
Oh, it was yesterday. The first of the day. So it made well. She knew where her wife's gone money.
It's too steep, very, too much of a stupid tool. Well, they probably did more, but I'm much more right away. Enjoying them, I said, okay, we have to put it as much.
That's the way it should be. Yeah, Ron's mom has got married in eighty-five. And her husband's ninety. So you know what? No, why not?
But anyway, I just, I just.
That's kind of what's coming out. I was asked. Seems like. Yeah, it's, uh, get down there and, uh, well, just. And it goes into the mall.
Okay. I already got on a C V C D at night.
Yeah.
Good, good, how you doing?
I know where this is going to show up.
I appreciate you being able to listen to our neighbors.
Oh, John.
Um, so Stan has a question. I might have to recuse myself. So I'm going to be leaving, but. So I don't, I don't, unless I get.
We're, that's a, that's all, of course, one, that we have. And, and. Here's a letter from.
I think they're seeking permission once.
Oh, we did, did try to get the cars, the little cars there. Did any parts of the cars there? Did she, because she was completely flooding charge.
Do you want me to?
I don't know. Cash or, or she was, uh, we saw like, uh, it's the name of the post office.
Hey. Oh, you got the big camera today, Dave.
I have.
I'm sorry?
You had the big camera today.
Yeah, I remembered all our toys.
I don't get why. I don't have anything. You just don't tell them when you say that.
Which?
No. After a trend is the only thing you can do. Laughing. Oh. Kevin, grade school flashbacks, sorry. Hey, you said you said. Grade school playground flashbacks. I was going to say, I'm sure military was brutal too. Yeah, my mind was back when you guys were coming here. I, I just, I don't really understand that. Okay, so the French, my dad was Brian. I was on more than. This is.
Straight.
Yeah, who are my brothers?
So we're, uh, for sure.
I make you. You can make that was right.
The only thing that's. The service. So I can't.
Cause you told it, your friend would learn about it. I don't know.
Which brings another, never, isn't in the right place.
Four days.
And a higher kids. I wanted to do this. Very good. Well, we can't just do this.
Okay. Thank you. Very much.
How you doing?
Pretty good.
It says.
Brendan.
What's that?
Brendan.
Brendan.
Brendan, at the co-op.
Oh, yeah.
We met at the, uh, city club thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Are you speaking?
I'm just going to do the indication.
Okay. Well, good to see you. So you're having a piecing together event. Well, that's. Is that outside or inside?
It's inside. It's in the, it's in our great room.
At the co-op?
Yeah.
What time is that? Five to seven?
Yeah. That sounds right.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
And somebody. And I have to. We have seven. Okay.
Do you need this back or? No, I'll let you.
You sure made a lot of people happy last night.
Oh.
Jubilant is more than work.
Did Ken break out some good wine?
No, and I, I talked him about that, you know? Mr. Chris.
Oh, it's tasty.
Chris said something.
I wasn't. I'm afraid. Oh. Nobody's. Okay.
Oh, this is John. So awesome. So. Every time I play good.
Mr. John? Do we want to see?
How many people here? Those usually brought.
Take a stab. That's good. Well, I think.
I'll tell you sometimes. You shouldn't just get.
Oh, I don't know how often.
I think he's married a violin.
Go Steve. Photographs of peace. This is great. Yeah, I was. Well, members. That's cool. So it took three years and then you're.
It is now ten o'clock and we will open this, uh, November ninth, twenty seventeen, uh, formal session of the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners. And to, uh, begin the day, we will start with the pledge of allegiance. And Michaela, would you mind, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have an invocation and we are, uh, blessed to have with us today a, a gentleman who is new to our community, but not to Oregon. He's a twenty-five year resident of Oregon, but, uh, he is the new pastor at the co-op ministry here in McMinnville. He is here with his wife and they, uh, or not here, he came to McMinnville and his wife came with him. Uh, but, uh, he's also a trained opera singer, but he said he would just do the invocation in normal voice today. But, uh, we just welcome you to the community and we thank you for coming to share the word of Lord with us, so if you would, please.
Let us pray. Gracious and holy one, we ask your blessing on these proceedings. We ask for wisdom and insight for all who are here. May we make decisions without division for the common good, with hearts that are open, with hearts that are full of justice and compassion. All these things we offer up, trusting in your love and mercy for all of God's children in this county. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you very much, Pastor.
Next time you'll have to sing for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
At this point in the agenda, we would, uh, take public comment and I do not have any, um, intent to speak for him, so we will move on to consent agenda, which is the next item on our agenda. And, uh, I do know that there is one piece that, uh, county council has asked that we pull from consent agenda. And, um, would you speak to that, please?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, uh, item four under contracts is an agreement between Yamhill County and clear ballot for a voter tally system. We are almost done finalizing the terms, uh, but there's still a couple of terms that are in discussion and, uh, that I would ask that that come off the consent agenda and I will address it at, under, uh, D.
You do want to move to the, uh, non-consent agenda then?
To other business, D.
Other business? Okay, so we will remove item four from the consent agenda and move it to item three of the, uh, other business. Okay. With that then, I would, uh, entertain a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved, uh, moved that we approve the consent agenda minus item B four.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Let the record show that, uh, Commissioner Starett, Commissioner Primzic and Commissioner Olson all voted in the affirmative. Moving on then to old business, I have nothing on the agenda. Other business, I have, uh, three items. The first one is consideration of the ratification of a collective bargaining agreement between Yamhill County and ASME Local one four two two, effective July first, twenty seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty. And I would move that we, uh, ratify this contract.
Uh, I have a few comments to make. I was the one that asked, I have this moved out the consent agenda. Uh, I won't go through all my comments, but just a few. First of all, I want to, um, let everybody understand that it is my intent to ratify this, this contract. A couple of comments and, uh, I found this process myself, self and I brought it up at one of our informal meetings before of being the whole negotiation process to me of being very frustrating. This time, I've never dealt with one, uh, that's been this frustrating. I understand a lot of the reasons why I, you know, why I feel frustrated about it. I guess my comments, I want, that some of the things, the angst that caused me, the frustration was that, first of all, is that we've had, we had between bargaining and mediation, we had twelve sessions and five of those or six of those were before the date of the contract and I had trouble understanding really why it took six sessions before we hit the contract, then another seven sessions in mediation after that to get it resolved. So that was a point of my frustration. A couple other just little points as I wanted to talk about is, um, that the, I'm really, I was really concerned with and I still haven't got some information about some of the things, the, uh, wanting to know the cost for in the involvement of outside, um, county council and, and staff are helping us during negotiations. I, I haven't gotten that piece yet of what it really costs us to have outside assistance in leading us through the negotiations, because I think that's a piece of information that I really wanted to know. And then, uh, I've received some different answers from among staff, not just employees before we went in negotiations, but from staff regarding some of the reasons why we moved away from interest-based bargaining and I, that was a long time ago when I wasn't here. But I've heard even from staff, different reasons why we've done it and that leads to a concern of mine that why we went from, if I have one staff member telling me one thing and another staff member telling me another thing, that's a concern of, uh, mine. I am glad to see though that we are not going to, um, as part of this ratification, that we are not going to take the management capability away from us for conducting a compensation survey, but I think we still need to conduct that and I will be, uh, encouraging everybody to do a compensation survey. And then I think my only other thing that I'm concerned is that during the, um, trying to get in Desiree was real good and Ken were real good at getting me information. I was a little bit, um, taken back when I found out that not just how many employees that we've had leave Yamhill County in the last three years, but that we don't know why they left Yamhill County. We, it, we have a field that says termination date, but when I asked, well, were they terminations? Were they retirements? Were they resignations? Or are they, that information was, could not, without going through every file, be made available? And I think that, to me, that, that tells a lot. So other than that, those are just some of the frustration. I found this whole process and the fact that maybe the commission, and there's a good reason the commission wasn't involved in the process, but I just wanted to bring up that I found this whole, the negotiated process to be very frustrating to me because of all the ones I've ever been through, I've never been through one that's been so frustrating. Uh, and so before I vote to ratify that, I just wanted to go on record with those comments. So.
Okay. Do I hear a motion on item D two?
You already made the motion, Commissioner.
I'm sorry?
You already made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll call for discussion.
Uh, the discussion has been had, uh, so I would call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, uh, let the record show that, uh, Commissioner Starett, Commissioner Primzic and Commissioner Olson all voted in the affirmative for ratification. Uh, moving to item D two, uh, this is consideration of extending the provisions of the twenty seventeen, twenty twenty collective bargaining agreement from ASME one four two two to associated non-bargaining employees. And I again would make the motion that we approve this. Any further discussion?
No discussion.
Hearing none, we'd ask for the question. Uh, all in favor of, uh, item D two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, let the record show Commissioner Starett, Commissioner Primzic and Commissioner Olson all voted in the affirmative. Thank you. And now we'll move to item D three, which was pulled from our consent agenda and that's the proven agreement between Yamhill County and clear ballot for the purchase of a voter tally system in the amount of one hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and, uh.
Yes, Mr. Chair Commissioners, uh, Christian Burnish asked me to, uh, have this, he says, please ask the board to pull it from the consent agenda and separately approve it, subject to final review and approval of county council's office, because there are a couple of terms that, uh, still need to be, uh, addressed. These terms are still discussing a few items, almost done. And this would be, uh, consistent with past practice, so.
Okay, and I would assume then that the things that, uh, council has some concerns about are minor and so consequently, uh, there's no reason not to move forward.
Right.
Okay. So with that then, uh.
I'll make the motion that we, uh, we accept it, um, based on the discussion with legal council and be based on their ability to resolve those issues with the contract.
Okay. So I would assume that the motion is being made on the condition that those.
Yes.
Okay. That being said, the, uh, the motion has been made, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Hearing none, let the record show that, uh, Commissioner Starett, Commissioner Primzic and Commissioner Olson all voted in the affirmative. And now, uh, prior to moving to public hearing, and I do apologize, uh, Mr. Rupp is in the audience and one of the things on our consent agenda was the placement of a, um, work of art done by a local artist, Steve Tyree, to be placed on the corner in front of the clerk's office. And, uh, Mr. Rupp did bring with the, uh, two pieces of, uh, two photographs, uh, showing that piece of, uh, of art and, uh, knowing Steve and his work personally, uh, we're very, very fortunate to have that here, so I'm going to pass these.
We have copies.
We have copies.
You have this? Okay, great. Uh, and I'm, uh, would ask that these be set back on the pedestal, so.
I can set mine back there too, so if anybody else wants to see a copy.
Crystal, could you put these back on the pedestal and back so people can take a look? And what's going to be there? Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not open for, this is for written testimony.
Okay, we will now move into, uh, public hearing. And, uh, this is a reopening of a hearing that, uh, we held over from a previous, uh, meeting. Uh, this, if I recall correctly, this was held over for written testimony only, uh, so, uh, there will be no verbal testimony. We do however, for the record, have written testimony from Mr. Wall. And, uh, so it has, this, I just received, so.
Add to this?
This is speaking to this item.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to recuse myself from this part of the proceedings and, um, because I have a conflict of interest.
Thank you, Commissioner Starett. Commissioner Starett does live on the road in question, so she is recusing herself.
So I don't need to come back? Will you adjourn? Do I need to come back after you return or do you have anything else that you're going to be doing?
Well, yeah, we'll public comment and, uh, commissioners' comments.
I just need you up in here.
Yeah, okay, sure. Go ahead, these are us. Thank you.
Mr. Sadler, when was the deadline for written comments to be submitted?
We just said during the period, I believe, we just said during the period between the, uh, the October twelfth hearing.
Up until now.
And today, so.
Okay.
I think it's probably acceptable. We don't have strict rules related to this hearing, so it's at the pleasure of the chair.
Thank you.
As to whether or not he wants to entertain a new testimony this way.
Well.
Did have one other letter that I would, at the appropriate time, I would tell you what that was.
Okay, I, I would, uh, one of the things, now that, uh, Commissioner Starett has left the room, uh, this hearing was held over, uh, to ascertain, uh, exactly what the status of Smith Road was. As I recall, uh, the petitioners for this gate had, uh, said in their statements that, uh, Clackamas County had vacated, uh, that, the road at their, at that end, and we wanted to make certain that that was the case. And, uh, in a follow-up to that, I'm going to ask, uh, county council who, uh, did his due diligence in that area to, uh, speak to that.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Olson, uh, at first I would state that we got a letter dated October twentieth, twenty seventeen from Stephen Gregg and Linda Gregg, uh, opposing the placement of the gate. Uh, I believe Stephen Gregg testified.
Yes, he did.
At the hearing. And, uh, also having a list of what he thinks should be conditions if, uh, it is approved. So, and you've, you've received that. I also did some follow-up, uh, October thirteenth with Clackamas County and I talked to Doug Cutshaw, uh, and he provided me with the, uh, a map of the road and, uh, stated that he is the road gate person and he, he made a point of saying that they've just put together a, a, uh, packet for gating roads, but he has not received any request to gate the road, uh, the Smith Road where it intersects with Heater Road.
Road where it intersects with Heater Road. And he said he is also the person who deals with vacation, road vacation, and the road is not vacate, no part of it is vacated and he has no requests pending for a vacation of, of Smith Road, with the part of it that's in Clackamas County.
Thank you very much, Counsel.
There may have been some confusion, there was, this was nineteen eighty-seven, but the, the road was vacated and relocated and rededicated at some point, it looks like in nineteen eighty-seven, but it continues to be a public road, the part that exists in Clackamas County.
Very good. All right.
County road.
Sorry, yes, okay. The, based on what counsel has said, now we did have a petition from all but, I believe, the one family that has property on Smith Road and Counsel Sterrett, who were very much in favor of this gate. However, without that being vacated or gated at the Clackamas County end, I think we would be, doing a disservice. I would make a motion that we approve the request conditioned on the vacation or gating at the Clackamas County end, that nothing can move forward on Yamhill County's end until that action is taken in Clackamas County. That way, we don't have to go through this process again. If in fact, the homeowners on Smith Road do follow through and have that done at the Clackamas County end, they then would have authority from Yamhill County to move forward at this end. Counsel, would a motion of that nature be acceptable?
Excuse me, Commissioner, point of order, does the Chair need to close the public hearing first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Deliberations.
Yes.
Sorry.
You're, you're right. Thank you, Laura. So we will close public hearing with all of the written testimony being accepted and I will restate my motion for the record that I would move that we approve the application for this gate with the condition that either a gate or a vacation of the Clackamas County end of this road be put in place prior to anything being done on the Yamhill County end of this road. So I would put that motion out there. Any further discussion?
I think I, I agree with you, Mr. Chair. I, I'm concerned, was concerned that if we would gate our end without Clackamas County there vacating or gating their end, the additional traffic, it could be put on the road from people from the Clackamas County end traversing the road and coming to our gate and not being able to get out, so having to turn around and go back. And there's no place to turn around on there.
Right, with the placement.
So I, I really like your, I like your recommendation. I think if, if we move in that direction in Clackamas County, then is really to gate or to vacate theirs and ours should be done along with theirs contingent on them.
Very good. All right. So I would call for the question. All in favor of allowing the gate on the Parrot Mountain, right at the Smith Road intersection, on Smith Road at, where it intersects with Parrot Mountain, with the condition that nothing can take place without the vacation of the Clackamas County end or a gate at the Clackamas County end, this approval would then be in place. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Let the record show that Commissioner Primzic and Commissioner Olson both voted in the affirmative and so it will be.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So with that, you know, I need to formally write up a condition like that and I would need a couple or three weeks to do that and there are other conditions such as the kind of gate and exactly where it's going to be located. And so if I could have three weeks, I'd appreciate that to get all of those details in an appropriate form for a written board order.
Okay. So what date would you like to bring it back?
I, I think it's either the twenty-third or the thirtieth, are either of those days appropriate?
Thanks, I mean, I don't think we want to know it.
What's that?
It doesn't need to be a full character during the vote, so it could just be old business.
Are those days Commissioner Day, hearing day, Commissioner meeting days?
Formal session dates?
The twenty-third and the thirtieth.
Twenty-third is not, we're having a joint meeting on the twenty-first, a combined session on the twenty-first. And what was the other date?
The thirtieth?
Yes.
We have a land use in.
The thirtieth would be, the thirtieth would be great, if that's okay.
Okay. Finalize it on the thirtieth then?
Yes, and bring it back.
Okay, bring back, okay.
Review and approval.
So if you would then let the record show that counsel will bring back a formal.
Written board order.
Written board order, and thank you.
With those conditions.
At that time, on the thirtieth, and we will finalize it then. Okay?
Yes.
All right. So, moving on to announcements. Do we have any?
No, no announcements really.
I do have a couple. Tomorrow is, the county will be celebrating Veterans Day. McMinnville will be having its first veterans parade, which we hope will become an annual event and I really want to encourage everyone to come out and celebrate veterans. And on the twelfth, which is Sunday, I'd like everybody to come to a concert at the community center at three o'clock that will be in honor of our veterans and remembering that this represents the one-hundredth anniversary of the entry of the United States into the First World War. So there are a lot of things going on. On the thirteenth of November is the thirty-fifth anniversary of the Vietnam Memorial Wall in Washington DC. Since its erection, over one hundred million people have visited the wall, making it one of the most visited monuments in Washington DC. So this, and it's also the two-hundred-and-forty-second anniversary of the Marine Corps.
Hoorah!
That's for Ken. So we do have a lot to celebrate and between now and the next time we come together, so just keep in mind that we've got, we have ten thousand veterans in Yamhill County and just to celebrate the gift that we have, living in this great country, in this great state, in this great county, because people are willing to put their lives on the line for us, as represented by my fellow Commissioner Olson, who is a veteran of the Air Force and I am a veteran of the United States Navy and.
Call me an Air Force guy? Navy?
I was disclaiming.
Boy. Although I did, wasn't.
It was the Navy Air Corps.
Navy Air.
Navy Air, so you know, it's the same thing.
We're the ones that stayed in the air, you just had to ride the waves.
Anyway, I do, I really, I'm sorry?
Forgot Ken.
He's a veteran.
No, he's a Marine. He, he wouldn't have been there without the Navy to get him there.
Uh-oh, here we go. Without the Navy aviation to fly cover for him.
I, no, I did not, I did not forget Ken, we did the hurrah for him. Anyway, that, that's my announcement, I just want everybody to be cognizant of the fact that we are celebrating a very important time this year, so. With that, if there's nothing else, we will adjourn this session of the Yamhill County Commissioners.